Okay, it's about five o'clock. This time I want to welcome everybody in the office for this important order. Thank you all for coming this evening. Roe Cop, Ms. Cobb.
Here.
Mr. Owen.
Here.
Mr. Hendricks.
Here.
Mr. Hill.
Here.
You do have a form. This time it will stand and pledge allegiance to the flag. Mr. Hill, will you lead us into prayer and say? Salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our Father, who has given us this beautiful day, you have to write to us and we thank you for our prosperity, Lord. We thank you for your love, the plan and sound blessing. And, Lord, the decisions we make tonight, we pray that they play into you to the benefit of the citizens of the county. Christ, I am a prayer. Amen.
Before we go any further, the easement for the well on the right wing, can we add that to the agenda right now and we see?
I make a motion if we add that.
I'm sorry, second. And I think you've written it up and, okay. This would be to add it. Any discussion? All in favor saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
I'd like to add something to your business.
Yes, sir.
I would like to add that the whole home trailer that was turned back over by the fire department, which was all pieces, and what we have left as a frame, the road department needs to turn it into a high-hauling apparatus. I'd like to add that the new business to transfer that to the road department. It belongs to the county commission.
Because adding this, you'll have to vote on later.
Yeah, yeah. I'm just finishing what we did.
Do we have a second?
No, sir.
Any discussion? All in favor saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. That would be me. On new business. Okay, at this time, I'll do the comments from citizens. I had no one to ask to speak this evening. Comments from officials or board members, I had no one. Bid openings, none. Awards of presentation, scheduling public hearings, none. I said it in there. I'll entertain a motion to approve it, and I have a second. Have you already signed everything initial?
I'm good working on it.
Okay, take this to second. I do know we have some guests here concerned with Waste Management, so I'll let them speak during this time, please. We, is Lee not with you, right?
No, he's not. He's still supposed to be here.
Okay. He left me a couple of minutes back. The tour. Did you want to do that in District Two?
At the time?
No, you got something marked out in District Two.
Yeah, I'm the board member. I didn't know about that.
Okay. Yeah, that's what we need to move that. I know we ran into something we need to move that to D.
To F.
F, thank you. I forgot my afterword. Each set up the work. Two, resolution two, should move to F. So entertain.
I make a motion with the city chairman to set up the work.
Except for two, we have a second. Any discussion? All in favor saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Look at the new business. I know we have Waste Management, Mr. Mark Howington here. And I know we have a resolution, I don't know that, I know that we have him here for a wait till we get down to Lee's part. IAC point contact. Whereas Cleveland County Commission is executing an agreement with IAC investing in and out of the help with proper use of the American Rescue Plan Act. And whereas the IAC continues to have work sessions related to the projects that can be funded by the American Rescue Plan Act, and therefore Cleveland County Commission hereby votes, please, a co from the meeting position of point contact.
I make a motion.
Will you say second? Okay. Mr. Hill, just make a motion. Call me a second. Any discussion? All in favor saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Whereas it is covenanted intention of the commission that a resident of the county is utilizing his well to service their property that is actually located within the roadway of County Highway 49. And whereas the property owner is under the security financing and a clear title of such property without an easement for access to such a well. Whereas the Cleveland County Attorney's Department is working with landlords counseling developing an easement which permits access while also adopting the county with any liabilities and the landlord will hope to catch harmless for its use of the well. Now therefore be resolved that proposed easement document is approved and the chairman is authorized to execute same on the half of the county.
I make a motion. It will stop, please.
We have a motion, we have a second. Have a second discussion?
I know you're writing this up, but what if they sell the property? Is that going to transfer? Is that going to be registered, the courthouse transfer over to, do you understand, they're responsible if something happens?
They will record the easement, they will run with the land, and if they sell the property, they would have to.
Would be on, would have to create a liability.
Ready to vote?
All of this happened, how did it come about?
I'm not sure how it come about. Probably, um, do you, I know the realtor company, do you know how this actually happened? I guess the people that's.
So the property was surveyed in 2018.
This is just 2012, your realtor.
The current owner purchased the property in 2018. It was not on the original survey when they purchased the property. Now the current owner is selling it, and they have a new survey, and it has been recorded on the new survey. That's how we were aware of it.
So apparently the well was put there years ago accidentally on our right wing?
Is that a dirt road?
It is a paved road.
Was it a handout or a board?
Is it board, yeah, or handout?
It's board.
But, I mean, if a car runs off the road, hits this thing, we're not liable, everyone is liable.
Correct.
Okay. Because that's what we're discussing here, is the liability, because it's on our right wing, pretty much.
So a new survey was going to be exactly realized that they fell on the right wing. Of course, the right wing's changed, and we've got the right wing, and I know that Lee has access to that.
Well, if a car runs off the right wing, it runs into somebody's mailbox or Phoenix, the person driving the vehicle will be responsible for repairs to mailbox or to any damage to property along the right wing, they're not responsible.
I mean, I disagree, I mean, because, you know, we run into that situation where you had, we had to put, has to be a breaker in the mailbox.
Oh, yeah. You remember?
We run into that, you know, we ask people, they had some really nice mailbox, made of rock or block. But I don't, has this got a wheelhouse or something?
There's a, last one was up there, there was a slide under the top of it.
Just open the top of it.
Just open the top.
Okay. Well, I don't know if it comes from the right wing.
I know this has come up when we get state and federal money for roads. And, which I know Jason's aware of, a state has a form you can sign, making the landlord liable for anything that happens instead of us being liable, the court will.
But we used to, I mean, passing and moving, I mean, could move it up the road, but we wouldn't get paid.
And that was specifically why I brought my attention, I made sure that they're turning foot language in there that I gave to him about adopting the county liability.
I know, but when I first got elected, we used to have problems on County Road 10, most people wouldn't move the fence. I think the next year, the legislature, they passed a law that they were willing to assume the liability that they believe, which is pretty much for real, it's pretty, it's like you need it for us.
Ready to vote? All in favor saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
And Mr. Chairman, I think we have a copy of it for you to sign, and I can take it to their council.
Okay. All right. You want to sign it down, or do you?
Please do it after me.
Moving on to, uh, I and D. Whereas the City of Hepburn is actively developing and soliciting tenants for its industrial park, and whereas the successful development of the City of Hepburn's industrial park will lead to additional tax revenue and enforcement opportunities which will benefit all citizens of Cleveland County. And whereas the commission finds the supporting, the Cleveland County economy serves a direct public purpose, and whereas the Cleveland County Commission desires to support the City of Hepburn's efforts regarding the development of the industrial park in the amount of $350,000. Whereas the City of Hepburn has agreed to give more state contributions specifically to be applied toward the engineering fees related to the industrial park and actual infrastructure development supported said park and to provide verification of how state funds are actually applied. Now therefore be resolved that the Cleveland County Commission directs that $350,000 be contributed to the City of Hepburn from the County General Fund account for the express purpose of supporting the development of the Hepburn Industrial Park.
I make a motion.
We have motion. Mr. Hill, second. Any discussion? All in favor saying aye.
Aye.
You understand? Okay.
Well, I think, yeah, I have a concussion on the business.
Yeah, I just suppose it's trying to be smart.
Moving next to, um, the pipe trailer. Not moving it. So there is a motion, there is a resolution to move, to transfer that from the EMA or the number one?
EMA, right.
Is it EMA? Number one. Moving that frame that is out here.
So, oh, we just pop them out?
The county attorney member on this, EMA number.
Oh, it's EMA, okay. So the motion would be to move, um, the trailer to the county engineer's responsibilities and office and his equipment. Did we have a big number for that? I'm sure there is, but no, there aren't. Okay, it's on that, and I raised it up. Okay. So you make a motion. I make a motion, second. Do we have a second? Got a second, any discussion? All in favor saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Now, what, was that it? That was it?
Oh, I have a truth to present to you.
I do, yes, thank you, thank you. I felt right. I need to do something else.
Well, that was these, but they sure might be.
Cleveland County Commission recognizes the following board appointments status as of this meeting. Board appointments, Library Board, uh, Library Board Martha Brown, Hospital Board Warren Wright, DHR Board, I think this is where the possibly change might be. You want to remove that name or?
Well, I just was going to discuss it because we feel like it might be a conflict of interest because he's got a, has turned in a contract with him and Martha Brown, so.
Oh, so I didn't have this. He just asked me if he could start on that.
Yeah, yeah, he will, he certainly won't be in a board reaction to it, but it come to our attention that he has turned in a contract, it might, it's just easier for us not to put somebody else on that work.
I'll remove that and I'll find another board.
I was giving, I was sending an email to all of you today, and I've probably been busy, but I got the call this morning that I think he had, he possibly put in a bid, cut the grass. The bid has not been awarded. However, they were aware they had lowest bids and was likely would have been awarded to them, not be a conflict of interest. And she was saying that she wouldn't make that award, but she was aware that she might have to sign it.
In order to avoid the whole appearance of impropriety, it's probably the best course of action.
Okay.
Not to.
So I'm going to remove Fred Kane from that. Is there any other replacement?
No. So, Ms. White, Ms. Brown is still going on. So has Ms. White done a thing to the hospital board yet?
No.
Okay.
That she's had contact with.
Yeah, she's, she's talked to some members, but she's quite unimpressed.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that we get to them and give them the information. Their secretary called me, you know, said that there's any votes that goes on with the hospital board with courtesy, and I talked to Lisa about reaching out to Pat, I think I had Pat call you to get her email, and that way she would be able to, not, the commission would not go and come and introduce them, that at least she would have who it is and then what else was going on when they show up.
I guess in the hospital board's going to talk.
Okay.
Oh. I think I dropped Chris P. to the sound of the board.
Wouldn't be certain.
I, he just got a question.
Oh, I know, so, today's a good one.
If the commission signed, the general.
But I would have to think if it come to the topic, correct? You know, I mentioned Cody Shelton.
Yeah. Oh, oh, we got.
Yeah, I just want to say that he is, I spoke to him today, he's willing to serve.
I'm not sorry about missing that, because I don't want to miss that opportunity. If y'all are mine, I'd like to add Cody Shelton and replace Fred Kane. I mean, you're going to have to make a catch.
I do know that he has a, he has a good, very good social work.
He knows, he's, we can get him for anything, we can agree.
All right, so the motion is, Library Board Martha Brown, Hospital Board Warren Wright, DHR Board Cody Shelton.
Aye.
Any discussion?
Just to make sure we get his information, do Lisa.
Okay, we'll do it.
Yeah.
All right, ready to vote? All in favor saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. You may proceed.
I guess I already reset it.
Yes, fine. So, we started the co, do you have anything?
We're not on that.
We all got it. I, you raise it. Anybody have any questions for Ms. Cobb?
Uh, did you hear in my background?
I've not heard that yet. I've been watching. Just wanted to make sure that we had a person to name of, we have not.
I'll read to her.
What about?
We used to, we thought they were letting us sleep.
What about the credit cards?
Pamela has been researching that, and she's been in contact with the bank, and it seems like it's going to be a previous advantage to transfer the authorization over to me and no one else. That is for the ACCA or the man's, is that only the chief administrative officer have a card?
What about, what about on the big book card?
Same. And I actually found a file where we have on the big book cards, where there's an account set up, and they actually sent cards, and on the outside, I'm going to, the previous administrator had written not to distribute those cards. She must have at some point in time found out the same information that I did, that no debit card is to be held by anyone but the chief administrative officer. So it says, it says only how to do those apps. I can get one for myself.
You can purchase it with the account for the good as charge.
Well, the thing, I'll tell you what, it's like, I've done it myself, and it's, I mean, it took at least about an hour. Because people sort of, they were evil. Just when you go down there, you don't have any, you don't have nothing. So you walk into Home Depot and all the customers, they actually walk in there, and they got to go to the computer, and you got to, you got to start to come chasing numbers. Find out I just paid for it, and said I just paid the loss, and whatever it was, I thought just give up on it now. I think Jesse gave up on it too, but Fred, I think he's a little more slower than, slower than the one that we are. But he's willing to stay there another night to get it. And every time, because, you know, you got to be cashier every time you go through. Take an hour, I have to buy a toilet seat cover, don't make no sense to me.
I just feel like it was on the ACCA, it was the examiner's office that I spoke to. They are, no way, no how, nobody does, you know.
Maybe we set the Home Depot system or something different, because at the end of the day, you're still got the same account that you got, oh, you do it, issue a PO number. Even when I got my credit card, company credit card, I have to have a PO number to use. So I don't know, it's just, I know it's a burden on, on the county, spending that much time around town, I mean, you know, I can just go down and get a box of labels all the night before they can even figure out what we're trying to do. But then, if you get the same one that's done, it's always regret, and everything. Just complain, that's the way it is.
Any, any other questions? Lisa, I hear you, anything?
No.
I got a couple things Lee wanted to bring up. Okay, good. Uh, he has a temp worker that is out of family league that's coming back?
No, he has a temp worker that he hired last week, and he had to work under twelve months, and he worked 39 hours a week. And he was hired to fill in because a full-time employee was out at MRL. The full-time employee has been released from the dock and now come back to work. So Lee is wanting to keep his temp worker to fill in there, he not letting go of him.
What, yeah, what Leah told me was, he sort of feels that the doctor released him, but he don't, he's not sure he's going to be able to perform to work. So he don't want to have to go back through and hire another temp if we could just keep this one for three months, I think that's what he told me.
Yeah, that's what he's saying, almost three months. And the full-time employee that has come back, um, has, has exhausted all of his MRL agreements. So he, if he's not able to come back to work, and if he tries and he can't come back, there's time to go leave for him.
Well, not only that, if he don't come back, then next week, the way I understand it is, our benefits stop, too.
Absolutely. He has, I think, makes the 15th, after the 15th, he is used to 480 hours. And so he'll be done with his benefits, um, some of his benefits already, but once he was paid for, of course, they're already running out, ending out, um, we're just looking at health insurance, but it will fight out of that.
But basically, he wants approval to keep that a temp for three more months.
Will that, will that not just have to be that job question?
I don't know. Leah just called me and asked me, but I bring this up, so I'm bringing that up.
I was uncertain, um, as far as who it needed to, I, I pretty much thought, I guess, that it was in his budget that he can do that. It's not going to hurt to have the person. As far as on my end, it doesn't.
Well, he's got it in his budget.
That's right. You see the company for that time, you say, what was this, worrying that body has been worrying about?
He did like brought out with the.
I, he, Jesse said he didn't seem comfortable, he just got it up for him. Okay, we got, will that get road?
So it is 39 and not 29, because I was told it was 29.
Well, it depends on, on how to move they are and what they are hired for. His 39 is simply based on the fact he's actually retired employee coming back. And so, um, we don't have to offer him benefits because he's temporary, which is starting point and ending point. So we don't have to offer benefits for that. But to not mess up his retirement and increase what he's already receiving, he can't work over 39 hours, but that's R S A.
That's good, I like that. Because on my end, I know it's 29, so I work for Mr. Benefield, or he's come back on retirement part-time, so I can work in 29, I mean, 39 is good, 29.
As long as he is temporary, as long as it's starting point and ending point.
Unfortunately, it's getting older, right?
Yes, I mean.
How long can it be more than? More than, it can be 12 months.
It can be a little less than three weeks.
But they're scheduled 29.
Yeah, I would stick with the 29.
Got one more time. All right, garbage on the roadside. We leave like three temporary employees to start a crew to pick up the garbage on the roadside. Is he having his, he said he did. So it's, now all these, as far as.
One of these guys, so these guys are going to be taking off.
You know everything about a big ass.
I mean, they're going to be taking off, because, you know, they're so backed up with the patch and nine.
No, but he wants three temporary employees.
Yeah, he's reviewing.
Yes. To be on the fleet. He wants three temporary employees hired to pick up garbage on the side of the road.
Because he can't.
Well, I know the sheriff has brought the council department in, and will vaccinate a lot of our inmates, so they've had one, but he still will not let them come out of jail until they get the second one. I'll find out. And I talked to Lee about this today, too. Mr. B would be, I think he'd like doing that better than he likes what men friends get.
What, what Lee was looking at was, this is the time of year to do it.
Yeah.
You can't do it in the spring, because grass starts growing. Right now is the time to do it, if we're going to do it.
Can, can we hold off on two, one of that?
So you want to lose them out here?
He just definitely bring it up and let's discuss it. But he said the garbage on the side of the road is getting a bit big issue.
Oh, they do.
Well, I think, and that's another thing, as far as him hiring temporary, is he likely did that with, if he has to, has that been a policy that he's all come up with?
Let's explain it for next, will you?
I said, with the new personnel manual, I have to look.
Yeah. You ain't had a chance to look at it.
I looked at it, I read through it, but I'm not absolutely sure about that.
Okay.
Well, it's not sure for the next week. And I'll find out one, because the sheriff has took the initiative to get the guys already vaccinated, but he still will not come out and tell, and I, and we can send Terry for 29 hours with four people, or three, four people to get him on that. And that's what, that's what's really right now, like Terry said, it'd be great if he could go pick up trash now, because the right ways are so clear, he didn't see the trash or anything.
Yeah, I mean, community service is what a lot of counties use, I think our judges would use to do this.
I make that, I'm working with that too. I got one about a week ago, and all these dead goods and stuff, we worked on that, and they give us for 20 hours.
Yeah, they just can't do, they can't do the right way, so because of the obvious areas, can they?
Ah, but, try to say it back to them, give them state, don't worry.
Well, that's, which we, the state, we worked on that, when the state does it, we can, yeah.
But Melody has, has, Melody has looked at it, I've talked, and I've got a talk with Patrick, I'm going to go a week with Patrick Allison, and I was going to do that today, I didn't get to see him today.
That would fall to a partnership between the courts, the district attorney's office, and sheriff's office. It's certainly possible.
And, and basically what she did on the last guy we had, it was marked at $10 an hour of refined, and, you know, all we had to do was sign a piece of paper, and he would come in and really got his 20 hours. It was really a pretty good work.
And do we, do we need to have our attorney to pursue this?
Yeah. And I'm going to get free help.
I've sent, I've sent some information about that, but I sent that to you in the form, correct?
Right.
Because we'll have to get the judge on board first.
Right.
That's the simple word to do.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah, anything? Emily, you have anything you need to add?
I do.
Okay. Any questions for Emily and Emily, and we want to welcome her, I guess it's her first commission lady yet, is it?
Yes.
It's been so many chances. We, glad to have you. All right. I think we're down to, we need to address, I know that we have some folks to come from Waste Management this evening. Mr. Howington? You ready, you want to come on up and vouch for mission? You want to leave him out, Tim?
Uh, no, he's, he's, he's.
He got beat up enough last time.
Oh, I know the, I mean, for me to just be, I'm wrong with it. And I talked to Lee, talked to. Oh, I know who that's about, I mean, for me to just be, up wrong with it, uh, and I talked to Leah, talked to Miss Scott. Y'all are being charged from when you swapped over, y'all, customers being though that it's six dollars a big cent, so they don't go wireless, I mean, don't go with paperless, if I'm not mistaken. That is something I talked to that all day, we got here, that is something that existed in the merger, the guy had it on, I'll have to be credited off, so that's not, that's, that don't, that's not a, a legitimate thing. It was just somebody hit the wrong button. Uh, we've had some problems with service coming here, I, I know this, I know Robert, uh, last time we was down here, he went somewhere else and come back, I was, I was wrong for a while. He come down and over ten weeks ago, uh, got blown in, uh, survived, but he's still not back, he's still, I talked to him today, he's still on Walker. Uh, still had an option, so we made his option off, his option never dropped, so he's not back. And as I was talking about the, up in M L A, I had to wait so long before I could replace him. I have him down in training, he is in training, uh, people start down here Monday, on the route all the time. We just had a, you know, just like everybody, we've been short handed, we, we was blessed the first year and a half ago, uh, fifteen month, we had five, twenty-five employees. First year and a half, we had zero incidents. Last six months, I think over half of us had, including myself, uh, had some drivers, you know, it's added and, and here like we, we, we haven't been short handed, I have four coming, uh, to help that. So I know that, being up front, I know that the problems, I miss, miss how I talked to her, we, we, I talked to Jenny, and, and Leah David, or Jenny David, uh, doing our best. But a lot of issues come through, we cannot, you know, find a way back. We, we had a big, y'all come up the hiring process, y'all had missed it forty thousand dollars, uh, advertising our hiring process. And I got four, four qualified people out of the whole process, and hoping for more, uh, but that's all we get, which does make me a bad fool. Uh, what was the problem?
One of, one of, which, most of my customers inside the city have them, but one of the guys that's out in the county that was doing some plumbing for me is, uh, Kelly, uh, what's his last name?
Kelly Isbell.
Yeah, but, uh, they know him, and I can worry about paying his bill. And he called your office, and they told him, don't, don't worry about it, that, uh, once everything changes over, he can start paying then. And he don't want all of a sudden, oh, four, five months, or they cut his service off. And he talked to Leah, he was sitting at, at my dining room table, uh, discussing the plumbing issue, and, uh, and he said, and I said, well, I, and, and, and then it was about a month later, he's back in. We were slipping at, at Atlanta, uh, on some plumbing, and he was doing it for me, and, uh, he says, and I was talking with Leah, and I said, well, here, you just talked to, to. He said, he wants to pay his bill, I've never seen a company where you couldn't pay your bill now.
Yeah, I, I haven't heard of that. I know that, I have heard that, uh, Jenny called me, uh, they was, some people were calling us up, service, and they were saying that we didn't service it there. Uh, and I talked to Leah about that, and I mean, talked to my, uh, about that today, and he said that for months. New hires, there, there are hires who get people trying to get some equipment, or just following any, following good practice, they'll tell them we service commercial down here, not residential. Uh, and Jenny has been sending those to us, and you know, we personally see those all through, uh, try to, uh, you know, make sure that we follow, and whether it's, or they get that, it's.
So did they give you the customer list, the way, when, when you bought them, bought them out, so you got their customer list and their billing list?
We, we were, we were, we're with the fans.
Okay.
We were, we were, we, we've been here for, for a while.
Mark has been with us.
So you just moved over, you got sold?
I got, I, we got sold, we got sold, because one of my drivers put it into hospital later. Uh, yeah, we got sold out, every, everything went over, uh, and they, they spent a few weeks, uh, I know another complaint that I heard from, from Jenny, that, that's come from customers, that they're getting a call right after, and they're saying, my garbage will be picked up. While they're done, they think that Waste Management has a package, and they put them in a truck, uh, and the racks on it, on the pack, every can's supposed to be picked up on this package. Well, two or three weeks down the road, two or three months, we, the drivers are having to go through and put them in order, how they pick them up. And therefore, if you're paying garbage, you're paying garbage, if you're not paying, if you're paying, you're all with four neighbors, then we pick these three up and we don't pick you up, we, we pick that one. That way y'all get more money, because we get people that's not paying, we put paper trucks in. And the drivers are trying to put these things in order, and it's, you know, drivers down here, you know, most routes are six hundred route, six hundred stops a day, and they're going through and they're putting them in order. And if they don't get them all in order, on our part, we're still learning how to do it. So they're supposed to close them out in a day, they don't close them out, whatever stops that says they didn't pick up, it's automatic, they're gonna call save, the rock truck was running by, we'll be there tomorrow. Uh, here again, it was against how Paul had said, uh, there was a customer said that he stopped his, uh, garbage that he picked up, uh, he called in, and the driver was pulling driver on the next table, he didn't know this, so he goes in, closes it out. And he calls, says, my garbage still not picked up, and they, I know customer service had told the, the customer, well, it shows that yours has been picked up. And that's a training, we went live October the fourth with, with these packages, so we're still in the train, we're still in the training, uh, area where we've got people that are good, but using flip phone, and now we're using tablets. And they're working, we're doing good, it's, it's been, you know, it's a working problem, and we good, uh.
How far are you out giving your small trucks?
As of yesterday, Friday, we have the new one Friday.
I just said we have them, bothering them in the neighborhood. We should have had them in October, um.
Last, and they're working on a cylinder, they're sitting out there in the ocean, that they can't get cylinder for.
Yeah, that's what we do.
And the trucks ready, each truck like two cylinders, and that's what comes, told us that, you know, they don't, they don't know, as soon as them, you know, if she doesn't get here, they're, we're gonna be fell back and frightened of us. And that was on, as of Friday, I, we, me and Billy, we ask every week, or every two weeks, ask the people, and they just sign over, ah, we're, we're in short hand, I got a cousin, we're still there, we're staying in short hand, we do all those things.
The main problem, I'm having in District Four cans being turned over and left, just left, you know.
Are you?
Do you have a policy for the driver, if they spill the can?
Policy is, is if they make the mess they clean, uh, for you, wanna call Jenny or?
Yeah.
Uh, Jenny, me, Jenny called me right before I got here, uh, and I, me and Jenny were talking, I, I'm going back in the morning, sending somebody back down there in the morning. It was done too late one day, because I was here for me to see, on Tuesday, we had two drivers, uh, that's in a big truck, so I couldn't tell which one it was, uh, but we, I'm sending somebody back down here in the morning. It's time somebody would have got down there from Bigmont, it would have been dark.
Then, then a can comes back down, you know, you grab the can, you take it up, so is it odd that it comes down and it opens the arms, or do you have another button that releases the arms?
So you said that, you hit the release button, it goes.
It releases it, so, because it seems like to me they're hitting it on the way, I guess, but I got a couple papers sent me, picture for, it's almost like you have to shoot it out of a can. Because it is, I mean, for that lady to have to go get that can, I, I'm like, I was impressed, she licked it out.
There, there's sometimes that, that you, you, I mean, I, I started off with residential, I, there's some times that you will, especially the big, my plum is, because the buttons are real close, sometimes your plum will hit the button. A lot of times when you set that thing down, and they'll, they'll, you set them down, and it's for what the wheels is, and that was like, I, I've seen.
Yeah.
A lot of the, like, years when all the garbage do, I said, Miss Jenny, uh, if they don't open, they don't set the can, whether it opens to the road. Once you dump that, all the garbage falls on the lid, and then when you bring the can back out, it'll, it'll, it'll build the garbage back out. And I don't know that that's the case, but I have, I have seen that, I've seen drivers just turn the cans on the lid.
Well, I've been picking up garbage for your, for your foot, and I'm certainly have to do it.
Yes, I, yeah, it, it is a policy that we put up in there.
Okay, if the driver is, is to pick up his, my yes, what kind, do you have a response time, or do they do it immediately, or?
They're supposed to, they're supposed to do it right there. Uh, and they're supposed to, uh, and in certain cases, we find out, I find out what driver, uh, did this, then, then I would help send out, talk to him, we'll take this to their action later.
Well, it's, it's not the first time, it's just, in this, that particular case, it's first.
Where, where, where is, I know the area, but I don't know where to.
How like ten thirty-one, for example?
So, pull back towards.
Five one?
Yeah, that might, I might, I think I might.
And Canada, uh, thirteen?
She was supposed to send me the text message, I left my phone on the next one, we'll be there, but she's supposed to send me a text message for that.
So, okay, if they don't pick it, what, what should I do, what should I tell your customer?
Uh, do you give them, I broke myself on them, and then I'll, I'll, I'll go up, uh, and then.
Oh, boy.
Uh, but yeah, that would be somebody there, if, if it's me personally, I, I, I will be there. Cause I offered to, to, to tell Jenny that I would go out with this, and she said that as long as I get down there in the morning, that would be fine.
You got your cell phone, like, for that one, like, I'm not sure it works.
It's, it's.
It worked.
Yeah, it worked, she goes, she goes up, she goes up all the time, so, she goes up, two five six? Uh, four nine nine, seven one six five.
You put them on speed dial.
That's my view, I started, they gave us Waste Management.
Well, I would, I would always tell him, oh, it depends on what it is, but, uh, but he's throwing the trash can, I think maybe it's, you know. If he don't spill the trash, and the guy's doing a great job, and he's, the lady's can, and I said, and she said, well, I guess they're calling, I recorded, now, look at this.
Yeah.
And I said, no, and I said, we got new drivers, so just come work yourself out, I believe.
Yeah, you know, you get, you get somebody that's new, and they're struggling to get the route up, they're going, I mean, you want all things over, that, that thing, and they're being, if I drop it, the foot, that saves me two, three seconds, we save two, three seconds over six hundred cans, you know, you get rid of it. They, they don't, and that's training, that we will, we will give to drivers and make.
Because you have to stop and pick up trash one time.
Yeah.
But the lid opens back away from the truck, or it's like.
And it's on the, it's on the lid, it says, put, put this to the road, but, you know, if you don't, they'll, I mean, I, but I used to run residential, so I had a spray can in my truck, if they turn around, I'd get that turn around, spray the lid so people can see. Uh, but yeah, that, I've seen that, it's, there's a driver, a lot of times, most of the times, that happens, and most of the times when the lids are getting tore off, it's because they're turning their can.
Oh.
Cause when he comes back out of truck, he, he grabs the lid, it's just a lot.
Okay.
I think, does Waste Management understand that we've got a contract? Yeah, we're not abiding by their company rules, they're abiding by the contract, but.
Yes, I probably saw.
I think that's the problem, because I've had people that call, and they're like, our policy is this, and our policy is that, well, let's not live within the contract. The contract is what they need to deal with, is clean the can, not their own policies. Like I had a eight-year-old lady that called, and picked up her garbage in two weeks. They told her, yeah, we're gonna pick it up two weeks from then, so that would've been a whole month.
Do you have that answer?
I mean, they fixed it a few months, a few weeks ago, but, but, just, I mean, when they had picked it up two weeks, and they told her it'd be another two weeks before they pick it up, I mean, that's ridiculous.
And that goes back to training with the new, new customer, sales reps, and all, so it goes back to training.
They, I mean, they, they need to, I mean, I know they're training them under Waste Management's rules, but they need to train them on our contract rules, because that's what they got to, to.
And something like that happens, you call me, and you, 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 they're, I, I live down, I live on the other side of the town, and I've been out here numerous times, before, I bought that, and then, trying, trying to mess up, to get them this far, something like that. Something like that happens, it's, it's.
I talked to you a couple months ago about two people that put their garbage on the side of the road, and they refused to.
You know, we, and we had this problem with, with Roy, Roy, Roy knew, played with Janet probably both in the oven, I mean, as far as the roads, because he runs many years. And, and when you, we got a set of turbo cars when we get the drivers in their car, but you've got that one dust on the road, the foot on the inside, and Roy knew to come back and get it, and Roy's the one that had the cover. And he didn't ride on the turbo cars. And as I catch these, I've been fixing, uh, you know, if there's a hundred like that, I've only caused about three, four of them. I, I catch them, wasn't a given, but it's, it's, it's a.
I mean, they do things with the tech, it's one, you get them all in there, it'll walk them through the route, just exactly like the throttle has them, we gotta get there, but.
Well, you know, you're not going to manage that, you're used to that.
It's beautiful for you.
Sorry.
I said, Dan, I want to deal with the last couple of months.
Oh.
Well, they, they, or, they giving you your assistant back, or they, they putting her back up, I mean, that was crazy, that, crazy.
Yeah, I, I, they're supposed to be forwarding her phone number to a person, because she, what it is, is she didn't have any access in the system to set the cushions up, so they had to forward the number to a person, and people were doing it, so.
Yeah, but she did, she worked so hard.
Oh, and if, and still, you have any?
Why did you break it?
I process was working a little bit.
Yeah.
So, uh, I received it, in the contract, I believe, now, correct if I'm wrong, we are supposed to, Cleveland County have a representative, is that true?
Yes.
So, everybody needs your phone. I mean.
I, I mean, it's, we can still sign, sign the, the same one, uh, the O four, and it's gonna react to by the same personnel, from what I'm saying, by the same personnel. I'm always, I got my cell phone, but you know, way, way this out here, when I'm out of my office, if you step off hungry in my place, uh, out, out of the service.
Yeah.
Uh, I have a cell phone, which is in my office, and that's all leaves to myself, I, I look down the day, and I hadn't had a call all day, and I look at my cell phone, which is going out. And when I finally go over there, three thirty, my wife had been calling me like ten times, won't know why, I'm so, so, if I'm out of the office, I know, I, you know, there's some places, we don't myself, but, yeah.
Well, I know you're doing that, getting back with me, maybe the next day, but I can say personally, I, but he's the gentleman that I have dealt with when I have problems. Sometimes he can't fix it, but the majority of the time, he does fix it, so he's the one that I call. I call that eight-hundred number, because I do not, you call them, and you're gonna get the runaround. They specifically told one of my customers that, um, that they, because they were charging them additional fee to pay their bill, that nobody had the right to tell them they didn't have to pay it, that they were on that.
I talked to the guy that's the municipal silver, that's over, they're saying, he is on the other side of the state, um, and done had a witness that were here for your listening, I talked to him when he was standing in court. If he calls, I mean, he's, you know, he's such a, a misunderstanding in the merger, so that would be, it's only ever that I pay him, if they did pay him, people would be with him first, that's why he dumped the oil. If you have, if you have any problems, and you can't get on the phone, send me that message, and I'll, I will, I will, I will.
Thank you. So what, uh, what about refunds, people just did a call, request refunds, or?
Yeah.
I, I can lay you that, pick up hers for two weeks.
Yeah, and most of the time when we say this, if they call Jenny, and it, we're in business, while our pension, we, then ran them personally, certainly, uh, somebody, you know, if they can't, and, and my office number is the same one, it's in, it's in the contract, but, uh, but it's set for four, it's one, and I still have a phone, in my office, so, you know, it's. Uh, my office number is two five six seven nine two six zero zero one, and that's my office number.
Seven nine two?
Six zero zero one.
What number?
Six zero zero one, and then the contract is six zero zero four, but I always use number one, she's number four, so it's, I still have my office number, it comes to my office.
Now, Jenny, once off, she has it on too, she has this number?
Oh, yeah, I talked to Jenny four, five times a day.
That's, I mean, people call me at the courthouse, of course, I always try to let you guys know as commissioners, but, you know, but also let Jenny know, and ask her to follow up.
And Jenny, me and Jenny talked this week, and she is, she is, I mean, I always would know she's new, I mean, good round of place, uh, and, and I talked to my boss, I'm gonna come down here and, and get with Leah, maybe, uh, get her and Leah and ride and follow the truck, and actually explain to her, when the guy's, you know, dumping a can, on how the can's supposed to sit, so it's, it'll help her out, so she'll know. And I did that, and she said, I was trying to handle all these problems, I said, well, if you're handling all these problems, then I don't know about it. I said, just, even if it's just an email, this is the problem, send me an email, that way I know, you know, cause it, when it gets to this one, there's a lot of things that I don't, I mean, don't know, that, you know.
Okay, I just wanna make sure that she handles it.
Oh, yeah, yeah, Jenny calls me or driving, uh, ever, you know, once, twice a day, sometimes.
Oh, no, you can't leave that. You go be reckoned, you know. Is there some sort of, I could penalize her, but.
If you're.
Don't hand this guy.
I don't know.
See, now, I'm trying to.
I think twenty today.
I tried to see way.
Yeah.
I'm just gonna.
I see any. Well, I think that's, that's no good, I have to be careful ordering food, I have to be in control.
And just, I said, no, that's that guy, uh, I, we're still, I'm still, it's like ours, uh.
I don't get very many calls, but I've been listening to them, but the few that I do get.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll, I always try to.
I don't get very many calls, but I've been listening to them, but the few that I do get, I, I, I always try to correct, uh.
Yeah, just shoot me a text message, I ain't one big, big, got nothing to do, and miss. And I, and I'm not telling you to grow, my growing, but, uh, but, you know, but with, the, with things about Westman's is, is I do, it's like a two or three month process before you turn on the machine, it's something you spend days in your, your bicycle. It'll be him and another driver will be down there for the next two or three months.
As long as they get the truck, we are, I'm gonna do it.
I, I, I feel you, I, I have a time, but they don't mind, they do mine on purpose, they don't mind my accident, they might get a toll, they do mine on purpose, so I, I feel it right.
Your girl just wanted to go scream and family, and then Brandon just goes to scream.
They, uh, drivers picked up Lily one time, and he had about three or four cans, and he was getting this time, he was breaking, he had just had eye surgery, so couldn't see, and the driver got out, and stacked them with the arm, and it was like four high. And he called me up there, get them down.
Well, thank y'all for coming.
Yes, sir, if, if, you got anything, you know, rest of the call, you want any other, this, y'all, you want?
No, this is good.
Okay, I can say, you already got it, it works, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I, I, I'll, you, Billy says when, when he retires, he's gonna give him one of them flip phones, and I'll have to text.
I can't get, when it comes to emails, I get so much junk, uh, they, ladies send emails every day, and there's probably fifteen emails that just jump, comes in on my phone, and I have to, I go through and I delete, and I say, oh, I got this email today, so, I understand, yeah.
Let me know when you leave.
Thanks, guys. All right, moving down, we don't have any old business discussion items, I know there's some discussion about the, uh, possible way we're gonna meet with this company, because, how's that line of up?
Uh, so they have given us a ten, so they actually made in person, and they agreed to do that now.
Good.
Uh, got a little change upon, I just talked to them, told them I thought the commissioners would really appreciate a one-on-one presentation.
Yeah, I think.
Thanks, Danny, they kind of refused at first, but then thought about it and changed their minds.
Yeah.
The dates that they have given are November the eleventh, the fifteenth, eighteen, the twenty-second, and the twenty-third. Now, November eleventh is a holiday, that's better, instead of this, this Thursday.
Is this gonna have to be a, a meeting that we want to advertise for, or?
I'd say.
I don't know anything about this. This is the, uh, we actually made a resolution, and they're supposed to give out, give us some information on the pay state. If, so we, we need a special meeting, just so that they can give us this information, and we can meet and receive information.
If there's gonna be any discussion about it, it has to be an announcement meeting.
Okay.
So then, if you want to move, please, five days out, five business days.
The first stage sounds pretty good, did you say the six minutes?
Fifteen.
Fifteen?
Well, um, the only thing that I got from any of you about which, which of those days were worked, is Laura hasn't sent me an email since the twenty-second was good for her, and now that isn't necessarily a limit, there's not another date, she just said the twenty-second worked for her.
When you say you worked for me?
You need to search the time?
They did not give me a time, they just said, like, no, they didn't have a schedule.
What, what time was it in, you asked?
I think it's good every day.
Nine, ten more?
Ten, ten.
Can we shoot you that, or call special call meeting? Do you want a ten minute? Think you could attend that?
When, when you go in, I said.
That's gonna be, um.
Sixteen?
One day, no.
I don't think it's scheduled.
Oh, yeah. I think they could be, I think they could chase it.
Two months, the most of the ones, two hundred.
Go on for there, right? Everybody give me a chance, and then ten, and then they would like, you know.
Yeah, they, they, yeah.
Okay. Ten o'clock, is that what we're supposed to say?
Yeah, ten o'clock.
Ten o'clock?
Eight a.m.
All right, we do a special call, all that, and I'm, tomorrow.
That's right, I'm right on it.
This is, this is how we're gonna be, you know, we're talking about this, um, the issue at hand, which is, um, I guess how they're reviewing, um, everybody's level. I'll give you more on that. Anything else, guys?
Yeah, just got a text, let me, let me read you the texts.
Okay.
Is it legal to put speed bumps on the dirt road in front of my house, I won't get you no rounds?
I want a gallon of water, man.
I don't think you can, yeah.
No.
Just kind of texts, and emails, and stuff like that.
Why is it not legal?
Not, it's not on the road.
Oh, it's.
You're doing it on your driveway, and.
Oh, yeah, they're actually, they're individual, do it, is that what you're, okay.
Yeah, I'm sure what she's probably thinking, because her other one is quite a huge part for her.
I think they're.
Can't go, whatever, I'm.
I think I, I know those, the speed bumps is wicked, they're, they're already in the can.
All of the problem on this deal, she was having a problem with the curators, Lee thinks they're too good.
Well, they, the guy's got it, that's, that's.
This is a ongoing deal, let's figure it out.
Say, well, I'm thinking, he's gonna work on Friday, but most time, all the time I get these guys, is on the week.
Anything else, guys? Ready?
I'm making motion to the jury.
I'm sorry.
All right, say ah.